Are we on? All right, welcome everybody. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. And before we get started this evening, I think Mr. Mike Thonnerow has an introduction he'd like to make.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. Thanks for the opportunity. I wanted to take a moment and have a formal introduction of Joey Shope. I know that some of you met him at a work session and a few of you may have even worked a popcorn festival booth with him over the last weekend, but I just wanted to take a moment and introduce him officially. Joey's our Public Service Superintendent. He'll oversee our Street Department, our Traffic Division, and our Buildings and Grounds. Joey's coming to us from City of Dayton where he worked in Central Purchasing for a while, then moved on to Buildings and Grounds and maintained 40 employees and 60 building assets. His experience with work orders, preventative maintenance program, and experience at City of Dayton, I think, has already, in the short two months that he's been with us, served us very, very well. And I'm very pleased to introduce Joey. And if I could, just let him have a moment to say hello and introduce himself. But thank you all, and I appreciate the brief opportunity this evening before your busy meeting.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Joey.
Yeah, good evening. Like Mike said, I'll keep it brief. I know there's a big agenda tonight. I'm excited to be here. It's already been a fun two months and look forward to working with all of you guys, getting to know you a little bit more.
All right, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, I'd like to call this meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Vales.
Here.
Councilmember Current.
Here.
Councilmember Doerr.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
So here a motion.
Motion to excuse Councilwoman Garcia.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Garcia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, but I understand she is on the way. Pledge and moment of silence, Councilmember Doerr, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Two days ago, we remembered the heinous terrorist attacks on the United States 20 years ago, where 2,977 innocent people lost their lives. And we remember the sacrifices of many in our emergency services and so many that gave sacrificially as well for others. This week, on September the 17th, is also Constitution Day. And it's, for me, a time of the year where I always try and read through the Constitution again. And I want to read for you a little bit of the proclamation from President George W. Bush in 2004, just three years after the 9/11 attacks. And it got me thinking, just the importance of the Constitution, our rights and privileges as citizens of the United States, and really gave me a sense of Thanksgiving for all that we have and enjoy here, and the importance of protecting that. So if you will, I'll read some of the proclamation from President Bush. 217 years ago this week, delegates to the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia signed one of the most enduring documents in history, the Constitution of the United States. Our Constitution is the foundation of our liberty and has guaranteed the rights of our people through a history of tremendous change and progress. Today, we marvel at the wisdom of the framers who toiled through a long summer of learned and contentious debates. Their work produced a document that upholds high ideals while answering the most practical questions of governance. The charter they crafted with its separate branches of government, enumerated powers, checks and balances, and later the specific protections provided by our Bill of Rights, guides our nation and inspires others around the world. During Constitution Week, our nation reflects on the significance of our Constitution and gives thanks for the blessings of liberty that this document helps to secure. We honor the men and women who have supported and defended it throughout our history at times with their lives. On Citizenship Day, we reaffirm our commitment to freedom, to ensuring that our values, that our history endures, and to instilling in America's next generation the values that make our country great. Please join me in silent prayer for those that lost their lives on 9/11 and for those Thank you all.
Thank you. Let the record show that Councilmember Garcia has joined us. We have an agenda before us this evening, and we need two changes. We need a motion to remove 7G and 7I. Do I hear such a motion?
Move to amend, Your Honor, the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move the, amend the agenda by removing 7G and 7I. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Now do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Move to approve the amended agenda. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Approval of minutes. We'll start off with August 16th, the work session. Any input?
Move to approve the minutes for the meeting of the 16th of August, work session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from August 16th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
Aye.
Thank you. Next are the minutes from August 23rd, the regular meeting minutes. Any comments?
Move to approve the August 23rd, 2021, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from August 23rd as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Same.
I'm sorry, I missed that one, didn't I?
Both of them, next to.
All right. Next are the September 1st, 2021 minutes. Any input?
Move to approve the minutes of September 1st, Your Honor.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 1st as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same. Extentions?
Abstain.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, we're starting off with a public hearing this evening, and it's PC 21-4. It's there somewhere. Take your time.
Public hearing, PC 21-4, Lamar Advertising of Dayton Electronic Variable Message Billboard Sign Application.
Thank you. All right, is the applicant present this evening? Something tells me the applicant is here.
Yes, thank you.
And well-prepared. Please come forward. Give us a name and address, please, and the microphone is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for having us up here this evening. It looks like you have a busy agenda, and we do have a certain amount. My name is Guy Taft. I'm a lawyer from Cincinnati with the law firm Strauss Troy, and I represent Lamar Outdoor Advertising. Also with me is my partner, one of my partners, Steve Shane, I'm sorry, Steve Schilling, my paralegal, Robin Shapiro, and we have the Vice President and General Manager for this region from Lamar, Sue Hoenbrink, and we have the Real Estate Manager from Lamar in this area, and that's Shane Slaven. And we've brought exhibits, we've given you a binder of exhibits, and both of the folks from Lamar are also here to provide testimony if you folks would like to have testimony or feel that's appropriate. This is a application for permit for a billboard. It's over at the, it's over on North, it's over on North Fairfield Road at right where it intersects with New Germany Treibein Road. It's the connector to I-675. And this billboard that is proposed, and it's pictures in the exhibit, the designs, the engineering, we have pictures of similar billboard that Lamar has in Beaver Creek. And what they are proposing is a billboard that is of the electronic variable message type, and it is the state-of-the-art in terms of billboard and in terms of presenting the billboard in a frame that is the most attractive, high-class that is available today anywhere in the country. And the way this really started is that Beaver Creek has a, has an ordinance, zoning ordinance, and that is 159, I'm sorry, 158.159. And that ordinance provides that Beaver Creek can have up to four electronic changeable billboards, let's just call them electronic billboards, in Beaver Creek. And it started out where it said they all had to be on either I-675 or they had to be on I-35. And then, in 2000, and by the way, when that was passed, let me just find the operative When that was passed, the operative language in the beginning of this ordinance under intent, and the intent is to maintain and expand the economic base of the city by helping foster a positive environment for commerce by allowing for a limited number of electronic variable message signs or digital billboards on commercially or industrial zone properties within the city. And then it has a lot of requirements that these billboards must meet in order to exist here. It controls their brightness, how long a message has to be up, how fast it has to change, when it does change, essentially it has to be instantaneous, a lot of regulations controlling these billboards. So two billboards have been built under this regulation or ordinance, and they're both either on 35 or on 675. And there were spacing requirements for these billboards, and there was really no place close to those where you could put the third or fourth. So Lamar started looking on where, within these regulations, you could put another billboard. And the point that was the farthest away from those was down here where this billboard is being proposed. And so they came down, they studied the area, they studied the ordinances, and they identified this location over on North Fairfield. And they went to the owners of the property, they were able to negotiate a lease, and then they contacted the zoning department and told them what they wanted to do, and they wanted to apply for an electronic digital billboard. Initially, and I think the folks from the Building Department can confirm this, initially they were told that you couldn't get one approved here. It had to be on either 675 or I-35. Lamar went back, looked again, did not see that requirement in the ordinances. And so they asked for an application for one of these billboards, and these folks kindly provided them with an application form and with a requirement sheet, and we have all this in the exhibits. And they proceeded, Lamar proceeded, to complete the application, comply with everything required in the ordinance, in the requirement sheet, everything for this billboard, and it's all in the application for the permit. And the application is actually Exhibit 1 in this binder of exhibits, and it's somewhat lengthy. In any event, they went back to your Building Department, Zoning Department, and the staff again told them that they couldn't, this could never be approved because it's not on 675 or 35. But Lamar didn't see the requirement, and wanted it submitted anyway, asked about what would be the filing fee for this permit, and they told them what the filing fee would be. They paid the $250. And I don't think, I don't think any of this is in dispute. I think this is the way it came down. So they filed it, and the staff, in an email, and the emails, by the way, are in this book of, or this binder of documents, they informed them that this would not be recommended for approval because it's not on 675 or 35. But they, Lamar wanted to proceed with it, so they went ahead and set this for a hearing and ultimately came here today. We went back and tried to figure out what this requirement was. And what we found, and we have, it's one of the exhibits in the binder, is that there was a council meeting back in 2016. And in that meeting, and we actually provide the minutes from it, and it shows a redlined version of this ordinance, and it actually shows where it used to require that the sign be on I-675 or 35, and it had been redlined out and changed to drop that requirement of being on one of those two highways. And instead said it had to be on a major highway, and then it defined what would constitute the kind of billboard you could have on various levels of major highways. If it was only four lanes, you would have a billboard of, I think it was up to 400 square feet. If it was seven through lanes, travel lanes, it was up to some larger number, 600, whatever it was, doesn't matter. And if it was more than seven, then it was even a larger billboard. Well, Lamar designed this billboard to be within the 400-square-foot, what's the word I'm looking for?
Display.
Yeah, the display, to be within 400-square-foot requirement for the smallest billboard, even though this is on a seven-through-lane road, North Fairfield, they designed it that it would be the smallest, that would be, that would be acceptable for even a four-lane. So they didn't build the biggest billboard or propose a biggest billboard they could. They proposed the smallest one within what constitutes a real billboard. So, so they, they met that requirement, and, and then, when this was changed, it was eliminated that it must be on 675 or 35. And there was, for some reason, your Building Department was, was under the impression that it be on one of those roads. And I think that Lamar pointed out to them that that was not in the current code, and you look in the current code, and we have a copy of the current code in our exhibit binder here, and you will see that it's not in the current code. So this is on what is defined in the 2016 amendment. It is on a major highway. It's actually seven through lanes, but if it was only four, it would still qualify, but it's on a seven-through lane, and it meets all of the, all of the requirements to build that billboard in that location where they applied for it. So it was set, the, your Building Department was not going to recommend approving it, and it was set for this, and then Friday afternoon, we received the staff report. And the staff report, which is also in this binder, the staff report made a recommendation, and it said that they were recommending against it, but now there's no mention of it not being on 675 or 35. They recommended against it because they said that the sign exceeds the maximum allowed sign height of the tallest sign permitted in PUD 88-18 by 15 feet, and it exceeded the maximum allowed square footage by 446 square feet per side and 892 square feet total. They said additionally, the PUD only allows two of these signs, both of which have already been constructed. So, and they have, they have another, another objection, but I'll get to that. So we went back and we looked at this PUD. This is a commercial PUD. The billboard's in a commercial area, and the requirement under 158.159 is that the billboard has to be in a commercial or industrial zoned area. There is no question but that that is a commercially zoned area. It's B3, and there's a PUD in it for the particular area where the sign is. And the P, the PUD addresses pylon signs, and the two, the pylon signs they're referring to in their disapproval, those were two specific pylon signs that were addressed in that PUD, and they were built according to that. There is nothing in that PUD that prohibits an electronic billboard, no reference even in there, to electronic billboards, and 158.159 specifically says that you can, if you're within the four in Beaver Creek, and we are, and it's commercially zoned, that we can put that billboard in there so long as we meet all these requirements. So just starting through it, exceeds the minimum sign height for the tallest sign permitted by, in the PUD. Well, the PUD only addressed these two pylon signs. It did not address electronic billboards. And there is no limitation for billboards like what they have for those pylon signs. And there's obviously a huge difference between billboards and pylon signs, and billboards are specially and specifically regulated by 158.159. So there's no height, there is, those height limitations do not apply here. The, the height of this billboard is squarely within what's allowable in Beaver Creek. The next thing they said is that the maximum allowed square footage, we exceeded that by 446 square feet per side. And again, we're not positive what they did because we really haven't had a chance to discuss what was done, but it appeared to us. Do we have a picture of this billboard? If you look at, here, if you look at Exhibit 1, here's, I'll just hold it up for you so you can see it. In Exhibit 1, which is the permit application, is a picture of the billboard. It's in, I don't know, four by six pages. And this is a rendering of what's going to be constructed there. And you can see from this that the billboard, this is the electronic sign face, which is shown here. But on top of that, it also has at the top, "Welcome to Beaver Creek." Now, we put that on there for Beaver Creek. We didn't do it for Lamar. And we put it on there because when we built our last electronic billboard, that was requested, that we put it on there, and we accommodated Beaver Creek and did it. So we're doing, we're offering to do it again, certainly don't have to have it. And then, your ordinances specifically require the identifiers at the bottom, Lamar. That's not a part of the sign face. And in fact, the ordinance, an appendix C to your zoning code, and that's a part of the exhibits here, specifically gives diagrams and shows how you measure the sign face. And, and it's the same as it is every place across the country. You don't measure the "Welcome to Beaver Creek" or the names of the company, you measure it by what's in the electronic face, and that's specifically required by your zoning code. Within that, within that space there, we are well under the 400-square-foot maximum per side, and it's allowed per side. So apparently, and I think they can clarify if I'm wrong on this, but apparently in calculating their square footage, they took into, they added to it the "Welcome to Beaver Creek." So that really, the height claim for disapproval is really not valid, and the, and the square footage demonstrably beyond any factual issue is not valid. The square footage is what's in that sign face. And that's what's applied for, by the way. We're not applying for something bigger than that. Says additionally, "The PUD only allows two of these signs," I'm quoting, "both of which have already been constructed." They're referring to the two pylon signs. That does not address electronic billboards, and there's nothing in there that even suggests that they're, that they are addressing electronic billboards. That's covered by 158.159. So I think that objection clearly falls. And then they went on to say that, as demonstrated by the signs within the surrounding developments, the property owner does have the option to convert up to 50% of the existing pylon signs to electronic variable without exceeding the maximum sign allowances of the PUD. Again, they're talking about converting those two pylons, and we're not talking about those pylon signs. In addition, when they get further in their report and say specifically their authority for that, for allowing this in the PUD, they are referring back into another section of the zoning ordinances that say if you convert a, one of these signs to, to electronic, then you can do it up to 50%. This is not a conversion, it's not a pylon, but what it shows is that even the staff, if you have a PUD, even the staff looks at other sections of your zoning ordinance to guide them on what you can do within that PUD, because a PUD doesn't address the conversion over to electronic. And, and, and we have gone out and we've found fair amount of law, which we will give you, that, that, that the zoning ordinances still apply in a PUD. You can't contradict it, but the zoning ordinances still apply, and the PUD does not address electronic billboards, hence 158.159 addresses it the same as the staff went out to another section on converting the pylons that was not addressed in the PUD. So, so their objections fall there. There's a final objection, though. It's, they, they say that they object because, in their opinion, this proposal is inconsistent with surrounding developments in both sign size and scale. And again, that is so vague on, does the zoning commission have the right to just pull something out of the air if they don't find something in your zoning ordinances that, that, that prohibits something? For those who are lawyers, and I'm sure Mr. McHugh can confirm, the Supreme Court of Ohio has repeatedly held, and it's really the same in every state that I've ever read, but have repeatedly held that zoning ordinance is totally valid, a good thing in society, but zoning ordinances restrict how someone can use their property. And, you know, under the Constitution, United States, Ohio, you have a right to use your property unless there is a valid restriction. And there are Supreme Court cases, Ohio specifically, that expressly say that if a zoning ordinance is vague, and you can't really tell what the interpretation is, what restriction it has, that ordinance is unenforceable because it is in the nature of a restriction against someone's use of their property, and if you do it with a vague ordinance, it's unconstitutional, it's illegal. So this last restriction doesn't say why, or this last objection doesn't say why, it simply says that the proposal is inconsistent with surrounding developments in both sign size and scale. This board is absolutely consistent with the regulation or the ordinance that controls it, which is 158.159. And I don't think there's going to be any dispute. And I don't think there's going to be any dispute, that we have met all of those requirements. It's consistent with the two other electronic billboards that have been built in Beaver Creek. It meets every single requirement. It's in a commercial area, which 158.159 says it's permissible in. And it is really at sort of the beginning to this big commercial area back there with every kind of store, retail store, restaurants, and, and I have an article, a news article in the exhibits. And the news article is about how the retail here in Beaver Creek has been hurt by COVID and other circumstances. The big developer out there went into bankruptcy and that, and that it's, it's necessary and incumbent upon this council to do things to try to revitalize it. And what could better help to revitalize all these, these, these retail places, these restaurants? What better could there be to have an absolute first class, electronic changeable billboard, very good appearance, electronic, very sharp, clear, well regulated, I mean well regulated. Your ordinance regulates it as well as anything I've seen, all the way down to brightness of the nits of light, how long you can keep, how long you have to keep one message on before you can change it. There's no scrolling, there's no animation, I mean it's very well controlled. And what better thing could you do at this point in time than to approve a billboard of this quality in that location? So, here's what we're here to do. We have come here, we have the exhibits, and I could easily walk you through those and get you through them pretty fast. And I spoke with Mr. McHugh, and I think that as we go through those, I don't think he's going to have an objection to any of them. We also have here the two witnesses who can testify if there's any kind of a dispute of their dealings with your building department, zoning department, and who can answer any questions you have about this billboard, the operation of it, and what, what will be done with this. This billboard also, Lamar offers these billboards also to the community. If you have public service messages, they'll put those up there if they're amber alerts. And a number of the exhibits in this book, just so that you get some idea as to the kind of speech you can put on these. Take a look at Exhibit, this came across. Take a look at Exhibit 10. This is the kind of thing that can be put on these billboards in terms of public service. We'll get to the commercial stuff. But in terms of the public service, and you all are probably aware of this, this is this missing child, Jacob Caldwell. This has been a few years ago. This is the one where the, the little boy saw his father murdered and, uh, and disappeared. And, and the Dayton police, the FBI, everyone was out looking for this boy for a full year, and they couldn't find him. They came to the billboard companies, Lamar, you look at that picture, you see whose name is under it, Lamar, but they came to the others too. They put that picture up on the billboards, and within four days, that child was located. And the people who had taken him and were holding him were brought to justice, four days. That's how effective these are. If you turn the, the first page, you will see there's a breaking news. Billboard's donated to help find Jacob Caldwell, missing since father's murder. You turn the page, and you can see the, the story behind it. And then, when you get down to not quite the second to last page, there is the same billboard that has across it, "Found." This child was found. And then you go to the next page, and it actually shows a picture of, of the child from the FBI in Cincinnati. That's one example of these billboards, but we put others in. If you look at Exhibit 11, speaking of September 11, 2001, this is a public service message, and it simply says on the billboard, "A call to remember, 20 years, September 11, 2001." Turn the page. Neil Armstrong died. They ran a billboard to his memory. Neil Armstrong, 1930 to 2012. Look at the next one. Last respect. That was when Aretha Franklin died. The FBI puts, well, go to 12. Here's where billboards were used to put up flood warnings to warn the community. And these are just examples. Here was one on giving away a silver Chevrolet in the name of Lane Rooms, male, age 14. Any information to find him? You go on, this is like an FBI alert. Wanted Benjamin R. Williams for homicide. And again, when the FBI thinks that someone's in the area, no matter what part of the country they're from, if they think they're in this area, we actually have a system set up with them where, where they contact us, we can instantly take billboards across a multi-state area and immediately put that person's picture up there. If it's something that's that important and that, that dangerous, and it's been very successful. We have, I don't think we put it in this book, we have a letter from the FBI thanking us for all the, the work we do in apprehending criminals. If you go to Exhibit 13, here's a furniture fair ad, "Happy New Year." These are getting into commercial ads now. You have the wood, furniture fair happens to be here in Beaver Creek. You have the wood house. You know, if you keep, you've seen, everyone's seen all these billboard messages. You've got a Kroger message on Lamar's billboard. And again, if you page through, especially if you get to the Kroger message, this is our other billboard, Beaver Creek. And you can see the quality of this billboard and the appearance of it. And it is perfectly consistent with the high quality shopping area that's down this road. Anyway, you can, you can go through these, or if you want to hear witnesses or testimony, I'll be glad to take you through these, but we have a lot of examples in there. We have, uh, and the point of all this is not only the commercial good, but it's the community good that, that this type of billboard in companies like Lamar present. And it presents both commercial speech and it presents non-commercial speech. Non-commercial speech being the speech of the amber alerts, you know, the public service stuff, the charity stuff. And these are constitutionally protected rights. They're protected under the First Amendment as far as the right to put those messages up, and they're protected under the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments, due process, the right to use your property. Now, you don't decide constitutional issues either, but, but the law is that you're not supposed to violate anybody's constitutional rights either. That's kind of an interesting dichotomy. So in any event, this is where I have to build my record, is here. And that's why we've done all this and we've gone through this. And, and depending on how Mr. McHugh and how this council would like to go through it, I think we can probably stipulate everything in here as to, as to its accuracy, not that you like it or dislike it, but simply that these are authentic, genuine documents, and they're admitted for the truth of their content and for whatever purpose you, or weight you decide to give it. Once those are in, we have our two witnesses, if you want to hear any testimony at all, and, and these documents do have the emails and stuff in it from you folks, it has your report in it, so it, it has everything in it. You can hear from the witnesses. And then, I am prepared, or we can do it on briefs, but I, I am prepared to discuss the law that I think is applicable to this, and I think beyond any question in the law that's applicable to this. One thing about being in the zoning area is it's one of those few areas where these issues have been hashed out over the years. So that's what I have. Are there any questions?
Let me start by asking Mr. McHugh a procedural question. Do we want to go ahead and do the staff report and hear from staff, and then come back and open things up a little bit more? Or do you want some other procedure?
Well, no, I think, I think you could. As far as the exhibits, I did talk to Mr. Pap ahead of time, and the exhibits were, to the extent that they are his exhibits, I don't think the city should have any objection. I would expect the same with respect to the city's staff report. You know, the saying goes, it is what is. I mean, those are his exhibits, the city's not conceding or agreeing, but there are certain portions of it, I think the city would certainly not, we're not going to challenge part that's our own zoning code. So, having, you know, having testimony, having a lot of testimony, having a lot of testimony on that this is the zoning code, this was the permit, I mean, these are many of the same exact documents that we have already in our staff report. So, I think, I think it would be definitely more efficient. And that's a common process among lawyers to stipulate as to exhibits that, again, we're not conceding that one way or another, but they are his exhibits, and the council will need to review them as, as their exhibits on their application.
Sure. Your suggestion would move on with the staff report?
I would move on with staff report. And then certainly, any questions, council can address to staff as they always do, or to applicant, as is traditional also, if there's any questions.
Could I, could I add one thing too? That, that, and we want these in the record, the record and admitted exhibits. That's what we want it for, for whatever weight you want. Okay.
It'll all be part of the exhibit of the record of the trial.
And just for completeness, and I'll make these representations to you, so you can hold me to them. We put in the permit application, the full permit application. We put in the receipt for payment of the application fee. We put in some maps of Beaver Creek, Google Maps, so you can see exactly, you know, the terrain, everything. The idea is to inform you as thoroughly as we can as to what is out there and what you're really looking at and making your decision. We included the emails that, that I've referenced. We have even your notice of hearing. We have your, these council minutes in here from the meeting from 2016, where the requirements were taken out to be along 35 and I-675. We have the Beaver Creek zoning code, Chapter 158. And I thought we, do we have this in its entirety, or is it just the part that applies to the billboard?
Both.
We have both.
Entire, yeah.
Okay, that's entire. We also have the Beaver Creek zoning code, Chapter 158, 159, in a separate exhibit, so that you can just go right to it, you don't have to try to dig it out of the code. We put in the Dayton Daily News article about the area mall owners filing for bankruptcy and the need to revitalize the area. We have then all the billboard messages and articles, the missing child, and that goes Exhibits 10 through 14. We have a letter from the property owner confirming their lease with us for this site, for this billboard, who also requests that you folks approve this. We have the full city Beaver Creek staff report on this relating to this. That's Exhibit 16, we put that in, so that will be in evidence. And, and then we also have the City of Beaver Creek resolution, recently putting the moratorium on future billboard applications until you, you, you get a handle on, on your present regulations. So that's, that gives you the complete picture of what, of what we're putting before you. And, and these, to my knowledge, are true and accurate in every respect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's render show that the Exhibits 1 through 17. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor Stone, members of council. Before use an application requesting approval for the construction of an approximately 55 foot tall electronic variable message sign to be located within Beaver Creek Town Center. More specifically, the property is located at 2781 Town Drive, which is Lot Number 3 within Beaver Creek Town Center at the northeast corner of the intersection of New Germany, Trebine, and North Fairfield Roads. So, the property was originally rezoned in 1989 and consisted of 113 acres at that time. It was rezoned from A1 agricultural to several different zoning districts, O1, B3, and B4, and then also some R4 multifamily residential. And then also at that same time, a PUD overlay was placed on the property as well. This isn't the way that we perform the process now, but in the, in the eighties and early nineties, they would do a PUD in conjunction with the zoning, so the zoning would still remain. Now, we just do PUDs, and within that PUD, we have allowed uses that kind of reference.